This meeting is now called to order. I'd like to welcome everyone this morning. Adoption of minutes?
Be it resolved that the minutes of the meetings held on January 11th, 2022, January 31st, 2022, and February the 2nd, 2022 be adopted.
Someone to move and someone to second. Councillor Mennel and Councillor Jones. The vote?
Just a minute.
Oh, sorry.
Did we not meet February 1st?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Ketchba.
And it does say that in there.
Yeah. Ready for the vote?
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Councillor or Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Mennel?
Yes.
Councillor Jaguerre?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba?
Yes.
And Warden?
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest or general nature thereof? Seeing none. Presenting petitions, presentations, and delegations. I would like to introduce Petrusia Hunter, St. Thomas Elgin Local Immigration Partnership. Good morning, Petrusia. Floor is yours.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. As mentioned, I'm the manager for the St. Thomas Elgin Local Immigration Partnership. It's been a long time since I've been in front of Bonneville. So thank you again for this opportunity. For anyone who doesn't know, the Local Immigration Partnership is a federally funded program that started work in the region in 2011. We are one of 70-some local immigration partnerships funded across Canada. And our role within the community is to build supports for newcomers and immigrants. So we do not directly serve newcomers and immigrants. We serve the community and support the community to better serve immigrants. So we are the other side of the coin that people often think our work entails. So last year, ourselves and eight other local immigration partnerships from around southwestern Ontario partnered with Western University to develop a survey to better understand the discrimination that is being experienced by our local visible minorities and immigrants. And also, we decided to include into the study the Indigenous peoples in the region. So our study was developed looking at questions that have already been asked in larger scope studies. This was done so that we can compare the local context to the wider Canadian knowledge. So instead of saying, "In Canada, this is the general thing," we can say, "In the Elgin-St. Thomas region, these are the experiences." We can also contrast that work. So we decided, we developed this survey, and last March, it was undertaken in our community through phone call system. So what happened is, we hired a third-party company that did phone call screenings, made sure people qualified for the study, as in, do they live in our region, and in which of these categories do they fall under. And then they went to an online survey and completed the survey, which was about 48, 50 questions. And of that, we had 407 participants that came from the St. Thomas and Elgin region. With the scope of the survey, we didn't ask specifically where the individuals were located. So it is generally St. Thomas and Elgin information and not information that we can say which county or which municipality is this existing in. So looking at who actually participated in the survey, of the 407 individuals, the largest group was the immigrant and visible minority group. In that, we had 186, almost half of the survey participants, were identified as an immigrant or visible minority. And what this means is that they were born outside of Canada and came to Canada and settled in our region. This doesn't tell us if they settled in different parts of Canada before, if they came directly here, if they may be immigrated here 90 years ago. It just means that they are identified as an immigrant. Also, the rural minority piece, or racialized people, as the term is changing to, they are not necessarily immigrants. So it could be people who were born in Canada who now live in St. Thomas and Elgin who are racialized in some way. And then our Indigenous population are people who self-identify as Indigenous. And finally, the rest of the people are considered white non-immigrants. So if you have a Caucasian background and you did not immigrate at one point in your life, you fall into the last group. So overall, we had a really great representation. If you look at the numbers, just for your context, if someone who calls themselves an immigrant who lives in Elgin County, there's 14% of our population for Elgin region, not including St. Thomas. It's about 11.9% for the full region. And the visible minorities is much smaller in the county as opposed to St. Thomas. We have about 1.9% in Elgin County, whereas for the full, for St. Thomas, it's about, for the full region including St. Thomas, it's 3%. And then our Indigenous peoples represent 2.25% of our region as well. So they are populations that are less common to be at the table. They're people that don't necessarily have a voice. And this study is trying to better understand their experiences living here. So it's a 60-page report, and I'm going to just highlight some of the pieces. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. There's a lot of slides I put there, but I will just be highlighting one little piece of each of those slides. But the first question, or one of the first questions asked, asked, "In the past three years, did you experience discrimination?" This doesn't tell you how many times someone experienced, it doesn't tell you if it was something that happened every day, every week. It just says, "Did you experience discrimination?" And what we're seeing here is that immigrants and visible minorities, about 7 in 10 individuals who call themselves an immigrant or visible minority, experienced discrimination. 9 in 10 Indigenous people had experienced discrimination in the last three years. And when we're contrasting that to the white non-immigrant, we're seeing less than 4 people. So there's definitely more discrimination be experienced by those marginalized populations, by those underrepresented populations. And what this, so just for instance, and this is how the rest of the statistics will be shared, so of the 186 immigrant participants, 68 of those 186 indicated that they experienced discrimination. So that's how everything should be read. So these numbers are all how many of the participants experienced. So when we're looking at who within this group, what do they look like? So the age group, when we're looking just at the immigrants and visible minorities, it is the 31 to 40. So it is more of the adults, the middle-aged, almost middle-aged adults that are experiencing it, whereas it falls off when you get older. This study did not look at youth because it gets very complex when you're trying to get permission from parents in an anonymous survey. So that is why it starts at 18. Looking next, education. Did education play a role on if someone's experiencing discrimination? And we found that immigrants who have an undergraduate degree experienced more, or were more likely to experience discrimination, which means these are people who have gone to university, gone to college, or gone to university and received a degree. So these are not necessarily people who are being discriminated for other education purposes. Looking also at household income, we are seeing the largest household income, so the $80,000 and above are the ones that are experiencing the most discrimination. So again, this isn't something that can be said, perhaps it's immigrants who are less economically sound. That is not the case. Looking again at the length of residence, so as I mentioned, immigrants can be defined as anyone who's been here, who moved, who was born somewhere else and moved here. And the biggest affected group of immigrants are people who have lived in our region for five to 10 years. So these are immigrants who are pretty well settled, actually, when you're looking at the definition that is used for funding, if you're considered less than five years is where you can access immigrant supports. So it's people who are well settled in the region and settled in Canada who are actually experiencing the most discrimination. The next piece, we asked about religion to see if there's some religious groups that are experiencing more. Due to numbers, we had to consolidate things, but it is the less common, less represented religions in our region that are experiencing the most. So we're looking at Baha'i, Buddhist, Jewish, Mennonite, and our traditional spirituality and Sikh. So a lot of these groups, like the Sikh and the Jewish, would have really visible aspects of their religious identity that we've seen, so perhaps could be a factor. And then we asked, "What is your race or your ethnicity?" And by and far, the black participants in the study experienced the most discrimination. And that falls off precipitously, so you're almost twice as likely to experience discrimination if you are black than if you are white. So this would only take the white immigrants, this step here. So if you're a white immigrant, you're about half as likely. So oftentimes, anecdotally, people say, "I know an immigrant and they've never experienced discrimination," but it could be the minority of the minority group that you're speaking with. So based on saying that white was the least discriminated, the next slide talks about if you are an immigrant and a visible minority. So we're looking at how those align. We are seeing that the immigrant visible minorities are the ones who are experiencing the most. And if you're an immigrant and you're not a visible minority, you're only about 60% chance likely to experience discrimination. And as I mentioned before, the first question asked, "Have you experienced discrimination once in the last three years?" We did dig a little bit more. Instead of asking how often, we asked in how many contexts. So how many different experiences, different interactions? Which, we gave a list of different interactions, and we found that the immigrants were experiencing almost five different scenarios that they experienced discrimination, whereas Indigenous people were experiencing it in eight different scenarios, which means each of those people who indicated, yes, they experienced discrimination, when asked in how many, they said in how many. So we're seeing that not only are Indigenous people experiencing more, are more likely to experience discrimination, they're experiencing it in more places. So I've pulled out some of the contexts. The full list is available in the report, but the ones that I felt were the most affected by policies and direction from municipalities and the county are when interacting with neighbors. So 34.9% of immigrants indicated that when they interact with neighbors, when they interact with people who live next door to them, they're experiencing discrimination. When you're using public areas like parks and sidewalks. So these are people who are just out in the community and using the resources that municipalities and the community are funding. When you're applying for a program or benefit, so that's looking for if someone is trying to access supports that they're entitled to, they experience discrimination in some way. Housing, as everyone knows, is a huge topic for our region, for most regions in Ontario, and if not Canada, but people feel like they're being discriminated in accessing houses. 29.6% of immigrants who experience discrimination found that housing was their issue. And finally, 29% when using libraries, community centers, rural recreational centers, and arenas. And these are all places that communities pride themselves often in being welcoming. And these contexts are important to bring to light because oftentimes, the intentions are not to be discriminated against, but this means that there could be systemic issues that are changing the impact and changing the interactions of our newcomers. So what we did is, I took this information and I put it onto a chart to help identify. So those lines, the green line is the Indigenous people, the blue is the immigrants. So just to show that, how that is different. So if you are an Indigenous person, you're experiencing the discrimination in a lot of the contexts all the time, which means you're less likely to be engaging in the community. Newcomers as well are a double of what the white non-immigrant is experiencing. So we are seeing a big difference, and we're seeing across the board that in almost every single context that was asked, we're seeing Immigrants, Visible Minorities, and Indigenous population are having negative experiences. We also asked, "What was the basis of discrimination?" And what we found was that it is often things that are inherent part of a person. So we're saying, race and skin color, ethnicity and culture, your accent, your language. Those were some of the key ones for our immigrant population. Gender did come up as well, so oftentimes, there could be a gendered role, but gender was one of the highest ones for our white non-immigrant as well. But when you ask about race and skin color, ethnicity, culture, accent, language, those are things that are very challenging for someone to change, and these are things that are key to a person's identity. So they're really basic aspects that need to be accepted in a way that is without any strings attached. And then also, we tried to understand what is it that people are experiencing, what is the type of discrimination? And by and far, they were, people could say less severe, but they still can have a large impact on a life. So there are things like inappropriate jokes, derogatory language, verbal abuse, and to the last extent, verbal threat. We luckily, in our region, do not see as much as the physical violence. So the physical threat, the damage property, and the physical abuse came up much less. However, our Indigenous peoples are experiencing those the most out of all of our groups. So looking at the impacts and how our communities are taking this information and living with it, and we found that most of the time, active coping strategies were not sought out, which would be, "Do you have someone to turn to? Do you have someone to report to? Is there something that you could do to stop it?" Most of the time, it was a passing coping. So it's like, "This is just how things are, this is just accepting the situation for what it is." And that has long-term impacts and long-term effects. So we asked also, "How are you feeling with these experiences?" And by and far, for newcomers and immigrants, discouragement, which means we have people who feel discouraged within our community, we have people who feel like they don't belong, they don't have any power, and they are excluded, they are othered. So these are really strong sentiments that I think really need to be addressed and understood. And then looking at, especially with the current pandemic, mental health is a really big piece that we're looking at. So looking at anxiety and depression, we're seeing that newcomers and invisible minorities are experiencing both anxiety and depression at almost the same levels because of this discrimination. We do see that white non-immigrants are really close behind, but by and far, the Indigenous peoples are experiencing really high rates of anxiety and depression due to discrimination. I've mentioned belonging and acceptance a few times, and we did see, as expected, that if you are being discriminated against, you feel like you belong less. Our immigrants who are being discriminated had the lowest ratings for feeling welcomed in our community. But great news is that newcomers who don't experience discrimination, they definitely are feeling welcomed and accepted within our community. So we do know that there are opportunities to extend this to the rest of the population. We do need to, I think, being aware of the situation is the first step to help us make informed decisions, informed strategies to better the experience of these people who call our community home. So some suggestions that we had for next steps. And today, we do have two different sessions that we have invited the community to. So from 11 till 1 o'clock today, we do have service providers and business owners coming to talk about this report, talk about strategies we can move forward in our community. And then in the evening, we've opened it up to the community at large, anyone who wants to be part of this conversation, to come up with other strategies. But just to leave you with something, one great way to increase inclusion within our community is to ensure that their voice is being heard at municipal councils. And there is an upcoming municipal election this fall, and perhaps there needs to be a strategic undertaking to ensure that our newcomers, immigrants, Indigenous people feel like they can have the opportunity to run within the political system, making sure that they understand the avenues they can take. Also, looking at what is happening in other communities, we do have other municipalities who have a specific person on their municipal, within their municipal system, who does look at attraction and retention of immigrants. We have Chatham Canton, also Sarnia, as someone who specifically looks at attraction and retention of newcomers. And it really helps embed the policies and practices to be welcomed in communities. We also have, I've taken some examples of other Lip Council participation, we see sitting at those tables. We do have, on our council, we do have someone from the Elgin County Library who sits in our council, but the direction and work of the library is quite different than the work of mayors and council members. So there is definitely value in finding ways, and if our formal partnership in sitting on our council isn't what fits for you, perhaps we can look at a biannual way to engage in strategies that can make our community more in tuned with this work, looking at strategies that can be implemented on the ground. The steel-up team is two people, currently one, we are hiring. So there's not much that two people can do in this wide community. There's a lot of diversity from one end to the other. The communities we work with in the east are definitely different than the communities we work with in the west. So having a more proactive approach with everyone sitting around this table and your colleagues that you sit with at your councils can really go a long way to build belonging. I know the west was working on a belonging strategy for their youth, and I think that ensuring that newcomers or immigrants, visible minorities, and Indigenous populations are considered in those talks are really, really important. I'll stop there. If anyone has any questions, please connect. You can ask me now, but also please connect.
Thank you, Petrusia, for your presentation. And go ahead, Councillor Martin.
I was just curious, because one of the things the Thames Valley School Board did, of course, they have elected officials, but they also have one appointed Indigenous member of their board, which I think, you know, is really very helpful. And I don't know if there's some way our councils could even have twice a year, someone come in and do this or something like that. I know we can't appoint someone, but it was, you know, all the rest are elected officials on the Thames Valley Board, other than a student appointee and an Indigenous appointee. So I'm just trying to think of some creative way that we could, because there aren't that many that are likely willing to run for council because of the fear of discrimination.
Absolutely. And everyone here knows how much work it is and the pressure, so there definitely is. But I think we don't have, I haven't, in my 11 years of living in this community, we haven't seen very much diversity at the councils, and that could, there's a lot of reasons for that. But looking strategically now is actually a great time to say, "How can we bring those voices up?"
Are there any further questions or comments from council? Go ahead, Councillor Jaguerre.
Thank you, Madam Martin. Yeah, I'm wondering if you have suggestions for groups or listservs, because this council, I think, I'm very proud of the fact that we've definitely increased the level of engagement and the number of opportunities for input, for, you know, whether it's the official plan to library fees, and so, any number of opportunities, the budget. So if, maybe not today, but if you have suggestions for our staff of, when we do send, beyond Facebook, when we send requests for input, if there are specific groups that we could send our request to, that would be very helpful.
Absolutely. And after the sessions we have today, so we will be, we're meeting with about, almost 100 people now, we will have promising practice, or suggestions that come out of that, and I will make sure the report gets passed by. And perhaps there's some initiatives, activities that you think can be undertaken by either the whole county or by the municipality specifically. I think that the reason it's great to have everyone sitting at the table is that we come up with a lot of really interesting ideas that people will have different perspectives on, so I definitely will make sure that that is forwarded over to you.
Okay, are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you again for coming today, and you have a great day.
Yeah, you as well.
Julie, could you read the resolution, please?
Can I ask a quick question? A quick question first. Does council have an interest in having staff explore what opportunities exist for council to strengthen their partnership with the local immigration partnership? Because we can work closely with the group and bring back some suggestions for whether there's an opportunity for council to participate, as was recommended by Petrusia.
Is everyone okay with that? I think it's a great idea. That's a great idea, Julie. Thank you.
So if that's the case, then be it resolved that the presentation from the St. Thomas Elgin Local Immigration Partnership be received, and that staff be directed to research opportunities for Elgin County Council to strengthen its partnership with the St. Thomas Elgin Local Immigration Partnership, and report back to County Council at a future meeting.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Deputy Warden Marks and Councillor McPhail. And the vote, please.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Mennel?
Yes.
Councillor Jaguerre?
Yes.
And Warden?
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Okay, committee of the whole, resolution, please.
Be it resolved that we do now move into committee of the whole.
Someone to move and someone to second. Councillor Martin, Councillor Mennel, and the vote, please.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Mennel?
Yes.
Councillor Jaguerre?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba?
Yes.
And Warden?
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Next item up is reports of council outside boards and staff. First one's Warden's Activity Report. The resolution, please.
Be it resolved that the February 1st, 2022, report titled "Warden's Activity Report" and COVID-19 Updates Submitted by the Warden be received and filed for information.
Someone to move and someone to second. Councillor Jones and seconded by Councillor Martin. Are there any questions or comments concerning this report? Seeing none, the vote.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Mennel?
Yes.
Councillor Jaguerre?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba?
Yes.
And Warden?
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Next item up is Environmental Committee Request for Funding. And the resolution?
Be it resolved that the report titled "Environmental Committee Request for..." Councillor Jones, Chair of the Environmental Advisory Committee, dated January 27th, 2022, be received and filed, and that Elgin County Council support the environmental committee's recommendation that a maximum of $5,000 be earmarked in the 2022 budget to be used to develop a 225-square-foot wildflower plot at an existing county facility, and that Elgin County Council permit the Elgin, or the Environmental Advisory Committee to pursue opportunities for grants and funding partners for 2023 projects, and further, that Elgin County Council permit the environmental committee to develop a policy associated with wildflower plots at county facilities for presentation to County Council at a future meeting.
Someone to move and someone to second. Councillor Mennel and Councillor Jones. Before I turn this over to Councillor Jones, I've talked to him earlier, and I'm going to just say a few comments, and then I'll turn it over to Councillor Jones. I wanted to bring to the attention of our council that this is a committee of council, and the council has asked this committee to do the work, and I can say that they've worked very hard, the committee and our council members that sit on that board or that committee. And I believe that they have some good ideas, and I think the key thing here is, at the last meeting, as we all know, they requested $10,000, but they've compromised, and they've come up with $5,000 for this particular project. And the more I thought about this project, I believe it can be a win-win for our environment and for our residents at Elgin Manor, because I believe that's where the pilot project would be taking place. And through talking with our CAO as well, I believe that we can overlap some things here. So we're not only doing some good work with the environment, we're also doing some good work for the residents in our long-term care facilities. And there could be a lot of good things that come out of this because the programming director at Elgin Manor could engage the residents and their families and friends to help take care of the garden. And possibly, the garden could be turned into an area where they could sit and do programming, and we could get some benches in there, and that could be another phase in of the project. So I encourage council to really look at this closely because I believe that there's a lot of good things that can come out of this. And at this time, I'll just turn it over to Councillor Jones.
Thank you, Warden French. Warden French. It's hard getting used to that. Well, the reports before you, recommendations have already been read. The committee did sit down and go over the questions that were posed at the last meeting. Those answers are before you as well. Committee did look at three different options to, I guess, look at different options of reducing the costs, and committee chose option two, which is the one that is a recommendation before you. And there are some small funds out there possibly that staff will look into further after, hopefully this is supported by council. And I guess... possibly, that staff will look into further after, hopefully, this is supported by council. And I guess if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions concerning this report? Seeing none, I guess we're ready.
Madam Morton.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Counselor Jagair. I looked and I didn't see your hand. Go ahead.
No worries. Thank you. Through you to Counselor Jones and the committee. So I just wanted to double check also if there's, there's a budget planned for following years. So again, from my experience, the, when you put it in the first year, you don't get 100% survival rate, and you need to replant, and it can take up to five years. And it also requires specialized maintenance, I'll call it, because if you don't know the difference between, you know, a James Rocket and a Phlox plant, then next thing you know, your investment of $5,000 is wasted because it's full of invasive species. So just wondering if that's been thought through as far as needs, financial needs to support this project and this idea for future years. Otherwise, I, I very much appreciate the notion of, and the recommendation from the committee, to use native plants where we have landscaping already, and where this is already part of our operational cost. But still a bit concerned about being out of our lane. When I look at the municipal act and, you know, the 26 areas of responsibilities and where our money needs to go, environmental issues is actually not a municipal responsibility. So hence my skepticism in thinking this through. Thank you.
Well, yeah, I guess somebody has to be a leader here. And a lot of people look up to our municipal councils and council members as leaders and thinking outside the box. When it comes to plantings, you can go to your nursery and buy the same flowers that will be planted now. You can buy heritage flowers at this point. And as far as looking after the garden, there are a lot of people that are well versed in what an actual invasive species is compared to what will be planted here. I don't see that being an issue as far as long term. There's maintenance in any garden we have. That's ongoing maintenance, and I don't see this as being any difference. Yes, there, there will be a small amount of replantings every year, but for the most part, these plantings that we're looking at have survived millennia, and they're much more hardy than anything we'll plant as an ornamental that's non-indigenous. So I, I think some of the arguments are mute that you're making. Personally, I think this is a great way just for the county to show leadership in environmental programs.
Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none, we're ready for the vote.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor Jagair.
No.
Counselor Ketchba.
No.
And Madam Warden.
Yes.
Seven two, the motion is carried.
The next item up is Terrace Lodge Redevelopment Construction Progress Update. Resolution, please.
Be it resolved that the report titled Terrace Lodge Redevelopment Construction Progress Update Submitted by the Terrace Lodge Redevelopment Steering Committee Chair, dated January 17th, 2022, be received and filed for information.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Martin and Counselor Purcell. And Counselor Purcell, are you prepared to give us an overview of your report?
Yes, I'd be happy to, Mary. Thank you very much. This basically brings the entire council up to date with the facts and figures in front of them, very much like the committee knows already. With all the moving parts we have, and we come to you periodically, moving money around, and that it can get a little intimidating if you don't see the big picture. And Julie and Brian and the team have done an excellent job of just putting it what I call crayon, so I can understand it. And I think everybody on council can. So periodically, we will bring a report like this to you. The bottom line remains the same. We're basically on target time-wise. We're certainly on target budget-wise. And we don't foresee any big surprises coming down, because we've managed to uncover most of those already. So it's basically an information report, and I thank council for their ongoing support.
Okay, thank you, council. Any questions or comments concerning this report? Go ahead, Counselor Ketch.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Just an observation that, given the number of change orders that have taken place to date, it's curious that a lot of these things weren't contemplated in the initial design phase.
Do you want a response to that, Counselor Ketchba, or is it just an observation?
It's an observation, and I would have thought that you can expect a few, but seems like, wow. And how many more can we expect?
Counselor Purcell, are you prepared to maybe give a bit more information to Counselor Ketchba?
Yeah, I, I can deal with that. Basically, the design phase is you've, you've got your people, the folks that put that stuff together are not the ones that actually install it, as you probably know it from any of the work you've done on a farm or anything. You've got all kinds of people who've got great ideas on how to do it. But when it comes to the implementation, execution, there's always a lot of tweaks. And when you start dealing with something as large as ours, we have expressed our concern as a committee when we found a few things that drive us crazy. But one of the biggest examples was the misalignment that was because the original drawings weren't 100% correct. And, you know, you can go back and start spitting at people and trying to find lawsuits and all that, but you're just throwing good money after bad if you do those types of things. So we're just trying to be totally transparent as possible. We did anticipate a lot of speed bumps like this, a lot of issues like this, and we're working through them as they come up. And we do hold them accountable, but we also find good, quick solutions to keep things moving forward. I hope that answers your question, sir.
Is that okay, Counselor Ketchba? Go ahead, Deputy Warden Marks.
Just to comment, as a member of the committee, I'm quite satisfied. Any, any time an issue comes up, we, there's a, seems to me there's always been a logical explanation. I get that comfort level that staff are on top of it. And, you know, I think you got to throw in two years of COVID, and that hasn't helped anything. But no, I'm, I still have a very high comfort level with the committee.
Thank you. Counselor Jones, go ahead.
Just being in similar industry for most of my life, it's described as an architect's dream and a builder's nightmare, as it comes out, too.
Are there any further comments or questions? Counselor Mennel.
Just as a member of the committee, I think that one thing we have to remember is that, yes, we are on budget and we are on time, and that's what the committee was endorsed to do. So thanks, Bob, for the presentation.
Are there any more questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call the vote, please.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor Jagair.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Madam Warden. Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next item is Homes Long-Term Care Home Service Accountability Agreement.
Be it resolved that the report titled Homes Long-Term Care Homes Service Accountability Agreement, L-SAA, or LSA, Schedule E, January 27th, 2022, be received and filed, and that County Council authorize the chief administrative officer and warden to sign the Long-Term Care Homes Service Accountability Agreement, Schedule E, for the homes for the period of January 1, 2021, to December 31st, 2021. And I suspect those should be period of January 1st, 2022, to December 31st, 2022. My error.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Jones and Counselor Martin. And I'll turn this over to Michelle. Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning, Madam Warden. Through you to members of council. So the LSA includes a schedule of reporting requirements for specific reports related to performance, occupancy, staffing, funding, and compliance. And Schedule E is a form of compliance declaration, which relates to a declaration that the homes have fulfilled their obligations under the LSA during the applicable period. And so, to the best of staff's knowledge, the three homes have satisfied the requirements of Schedule E, Form of Compliance Declaration, for the January 1 to December 31st, 2021 year. And the two recommendations are before council, that report be received and filed, and that council approve signing of the Schedule E Declaration of Compliance from both the C O and the warden, sorry, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Are there any questions for Michelle? Seeing none. We'll call the vote, please.
Thank you. So the, the resolution is as presented in your agenda, January 1, 2021, to December 31st, 2021. Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor Jagair.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
And Madam Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next item is Procurement Activity Report, October 1st, 2021, to December 31st, 2021.
Be it resolved that the January 31st, 2022, report titled Procurement Activity Report for October 1st, 2021, to December 31st, 2021, submitted by the Purchasing Coordinator, be received and filed for information.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Deputy Warden Marks and Counselor McPhail. And I'll turn this over to Mike. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Warden. Through you to County Council. So this quarterly procurement activity report just details the award of contracts that were approved by directors between 15,000 and 250,000. Mr. Port covers the period from October to December of last year. The list of the projects and the supplier is attached as Appendix A. All contracts comply with the county's procurement policy. At this time, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions concerning this report? Seeing none, we'll call the vote.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor Jagair.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next item is Elgin County Museum Advisory Committee 2022 Membership. And the resolution?
Be it resolved that County Council confirm the membership of the Elgin County Museum Advisory Committee, as outlined in the report titled Elgin County Museum Advisory Committee 2022 Membership, from the Director of Community and Cultural Services, dated February 8th, 2022, and that the warden, on behalf of County Council, issue a letter of appreciation to Mr. Perry Clutterbuck for his past service to the committee.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Mennel and Counselor Ketchba. And I'll turn this over to Brian. Good morning, Brian.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Warden, and through you to County Council. This report recommends a new appointment to the Elgin Museum Advisory Committee. Ms. Jennifer Beauchamp has agreed to join the committee. She's a curator at the Port Fairwell Marine Museum as a museum liaison member. The other members of the committee are listed in the report. We would also like to have the warden and council acknowledge the service of Mr. Perry Clutterbuck, who has served 16 continuous years in both capacities as chair and vice chair, and has brought an immense amount of knowledge to this committee. And certainly, he and his wife, Mary, have been great supporters over the years of both museums and archives. So we're recommending that his service be acknowledged. And I'm happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Are there any questions for Brian? Seeing none.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor Jagair.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Madam Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next item is H R Policies Paid Sick Leave Short Term Disability. Resolution, please.
Be it resolved that County Council approve H R Policies 9.60 Paid Sick Leave Short Term Disability and 5.20 Benefit Premium Payments as drafted, and that the report dated February 8th, 2022, from the Director of Human Resources be received and filed.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Jones. And seconded by Counselor Mennel. And I'll turn this over to Amy. Good morning, Amy.
Good morning, Warden French and members of County Council. So H R is continuing to review the H R Policy Manual, and two additional policy amendments are before council today. The changes within are highlighted for council's awareness, and the majority of these changes are housekeeping in nature. Firstly, Policy 9.6 was raised for review as it still contained historical language related to sick time ceasing at age 65. While long-term disability will cease at age 65, sick time and short-term disability should not. There are also, we are also recommending the merging of the sick time and the short-term disability policies, as these are ultimately the same accrual of time for non-union staff. Therefore, we'd be able to delete Policy 5.6, and it helps us to further clean up and streamline our H R Policy Manual. We're also recommending that an insignificant accrual of sick time be added for temporary full-time, non-union staff. We've been using this classification more frequently in the recent years, and it has been noted that these individuals didn't have any sick time to draw from if they were ill. So this accrual will help to ensure that all staff stay home when they're not well. And secondly, Policy 5.2 relating to benefit premium payment, we're recommending the policy name be changed to indicate that these benefit provisions form a part of the total compensation policy or package for non-union staff. And other language changes are housekeeping, and ultimately removing language that's no longer applicable to the policy. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or receive any feedback that council might have.
Thank you, Amy. Are there any questions or concerns? Okay, seeing none. The vote, please.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor Jagair.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Madam Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next item is SCORE Short Line Rail. And I guess we'll have the resolution, please.
Be it resolved that the report titled SCORE Short Line Rail from the Manager of Economic Development and Tourism, dated January 28th, 2022, be received and filed as information.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Ketchba. And seconded by Deputy Warden Marks. And I'll turn this over to Kate.
Good morning, Kate. Good morning, Madam Warden. Through you to County Council. Before you is the report, following up on the January 28th question from County Council in regards to more details on the short line rail program of SCORE. So attached to the report is a letter from Kim Earls, the Executive Director of SCORE, addressing financial implications of the short line rail for Elgin County.
Thank you, Kate. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none. The vote, please.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor Jagair.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Madam Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next item is Local Business Accelerator Program. Resolution, please.
Be it resolved that the report titled Local Business Accelerator Program from the Manager of Economic Development and Tourism, dated January 20th, 2022, be received and filed as information.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Jones. And seconded by Counselor Jagair. And I'll turn this over to you, Kate, again, please.
Wonderful. Thank you, Madam Warden. Through you to County Council. As part of our dedication to partner with St. Thomas and St. Thomas Economic Development Corporation, this is an initiative that the CEO of St. Thomas Economic Development Corporation and ourselves as the county have partnered on to provide more funding to our, our communities. There will be an ambassador for the City of St. Thomas downtown, and we will secure funding for an ambassador for West Elgin. West Elgin was chosen because they have an economic development strategy, which also identified some key data points that was done, I would say, four years ago, I believe. So we were able to utilize that economic development strategy to apply for this funding in partnership with the City of St. Thomas.
Okay, thank you, Kate. Are there any questions for Kate? Are there any questions for Kate? None, the vote, please.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Menel.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer. Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Madam Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next item is Draft Plan of Condominium Approval, The Ridge at Talbotville Grove.
Be it resolved that Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin grant draft plan approval to the draft plan of condominium proposed by Dillon Consulting Limited in the township of Southold described under file number 34CD-SO12101, and that staff be directed to provide notice of this decision subject to the conditions for final approval in accordance with the Planning Act.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Jones and Counselor McPhail, and I guess this would be you, Brian.
Morning, Madam Warden, through you to County Council. With the support of our planning external consultant, staff is happy to recommend approval of the proposed development, being that it's consistent with the provincial policy statement, conforms to the policies of both the county and township official plans, can be made compliant with the township's zoning bylaw, and represents good planning and is of public interest. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Are there any questions for Brian? Seeing none, we'll call the vote.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Menel.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Ketchba.
Yes.
Madam Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next item is Draft Plan Approval of Vacant Land Condominium Resolution, please.
Be it resolved that the Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin grant draft plan approval to the draft plan of condominium proposed by Dillon Consulting Limited in the town of Elmer, file number 34CD-AY2102, and that staff be directed to provide notice of this decision subject to the conditions for final approval in accordance with the Planning Act.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Jones and Counselor Menel, and I'll turn this over to Brian.
Thank you, Madam Warden, once again through you to County Council. Again, upon review by our external planning consultant, the same recommendation is before you, that the draft plan of condominium be approved by council. With that, be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Brian? Seeing none, the vote.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Menel.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Madam Warden. Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next item is Dutton Land Holdings Development Curry Road.
Be it resolved that the report titled Dutton Land Holdings Development Curry Road from the General Manager of Engineering, Planning and Enterprise/Deputy CAO dated January 14th, 2022 be received and filed, and that $1,525,000 be added to the capital plan to fund road network enhancements in order to accommodate proposed future developments adjacent to Curry Road near Pioneer Line.
Okay, someone to move, someone to second. Counselor Martin and Counselor McPhail, and I'll turn this over to Brian.
Thank you, Madam Warden, through you to Council. County staff received a traffic impact study which determined the road network improvements, impacts rather, associated with a number of proposed developments near the northern limits of the village of Dutton. The study's recommendations include short and long-term impacts to Curry Road in order to accommodate the full build-out to the developments as noted by our CEO. Total estimated cost to implement the recommended mitigation measures on Curry Road are $1,525,000 and will be added to future years of the capital plan. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Are there any questions for Brian? Counselor Martin.
No questions, just a comment that if you have development charges, it would cover the full cost of this.
Counselor Purcell, go ahead.
Yes, I'm very happy with the report, and it's a self-inflicted wound because we did invite Brian down at the early stages of all these developments to guide us as to what would have to happen over a period of time. This road was due for development in '31, we're moving it forward, obviously, but it's not just because of the new development. Anybody that knows that particular area, we have the new head office of the West Elgin Mutual, the old head office of the West Elgin Mutual has now become the United Church. We have McDonald Trucking, which is probably one of the largest livestock movers in Elgin County. We have Aggris right on that corner. We also have in very close proximity the OPP detachment, the ambulance service, and the fire service, plus this is the EDR for the 401, so that's increased in use too. So this is a sensible step forward, and it's recognizing what will have to happen. The part I like the most about it is Brian and the county staff are in on the ground floor, and they'll dictate when and if this happens, and it will only be dictated on need as opposed to a knee-jerk reaction, and we're doing something reactionary later. So I just wanted to comment on that. I want to thank them for coming down and working with us to find solutions ahead of time.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Purcell. Are there any further questions or comments? Go ahead, Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Yeah, I don't have a problem. I just, how does this affect other projects or budget in the future? How's that going to work?
Through you, Madam Warden, to Counselor Jones. This section of Curry Road was planned to be reconstructed at some point in the next five to 10 years, so it's just a function of expediting the work sooner than originally scheduled, so.
Deputy Warden Marks.
I have no problem supporting this. I actually like the cooperation between the upper and lower tiers, and we're looking ahead rather than behind, so I can support this.
Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the vote.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Menel.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Madam Warden. Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next item is Elgin County ATL Networks Incorporated Resolution, please.
Be it resolved that the report to council dated January 18, 2022, and entitled Elgin County ATL Networks Incorporated Telecommunication Equipment Consent and Road User Agreement be received and filed, and that County Council approve and authorize the warden and chief administrative officer to execute a proposed telecommunication equipment consent and road user agreement as between Elgin County and ATL Networks Incorporated in the form and of the content attached.
Okay, thank you. Someone to move and someone to second, Counselor Ketchba, seconded by Counselor McPhail, and I'll turn this over to you, Brian.
Thank you, Madam Warden, through you to Council. Staff is happy to present to you another agreement between an eager ISP service provider looking to install fiber within the county's road allowance. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions or comments? Seeing, oh, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Warden, just a question through you to staff. Brian, did this particular ISP service provider had any concerns and/or issues with the current road user agreement? Thank you.
Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call the vote.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Menel.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Madam Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next item is White Station Operations Center Antenna Communications Tower Inspection. Resolution?
Be it resolved that the report titled White Station Operations Center Antenna Communications Tower Inspection from the General Manager of Engineering, Planning and Enterprise dated January 17, 2022 be received and filed.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Deputy Warden Marks, and seconded by Counselor Jones, and I'll turn this over to Brian again, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden, through you to Council. In accordance with applicable CSA standard, a biannual antenna tower inspection was completed. This is the first time it's ever been completed since a tower was constructed in the 60s. It was a non-structural review of the tower. A list of minor deficiencies were noted and will be addressed within the coming months, anticipated to be completed by spring. At the same time, staff are periodically getting requests from other local service providers expressing interest to affix equipment to the county's tower. And so, if so directed by council, a fulsome structural valuation of the tower would need to be done first to confirm whether or not the tower is capable of facilitating additional equipment to be affixed to the tower. So with that, I'd be happy to answer the questions.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Are there any questions concerning this report? Counselor McPhail.
I don't know if it's so much a question, but as we are all striving very hard to do what we can to increase the broadband service in Elgin County, it seems to me that if we have something as integral of a tower of this size in our community, that would we not be wise to make sure that ISPs have the opportunity to use it? And would we not be letting that message know that we do have a tower available and someone would like to service residents of, that can be serviced off that tower, that it's available?
Have a comment?
Through you, Madam Warden, to Counselor McPhail, and the rest of council, we'd be pleased to provide a follow-up report on how that might be administered and handled. That's a great point.
Go ahead, Deputy Warden Marks.
I certainly support that. You know, it's, you know, just having the evaluation, if memory serves me correct, there's very little income from that tower, and it seems like it is a real asset, so down the road maybe it can become an income source as well. Plus, I think there are a lot of residents out in that area could be serviced from that. So I think we're going in the right direction.
Counselor Menel.
Certainly, I would support this. I think this is a win-win situation where the county gets some revenue at the same time as we increase service in that vicinity. So certainly, I would hope that all the ISPs, local ISPs, would be aware that we're willing to cooperate with them.
Are there any further comments or questions? Seeing none.
Counselor McPhail.
What was the final resolution on this?
So this resolution is that the report be received and filed.
Okay.
And that staff be directed to provide a follow-up report regarding ISP access to White Street Tower.
Yes, yes, double yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Menel.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Madam Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next item is Bank Street, south of Catfish Creek, re addition to Elgin County Highway System.
One second.
I've got Terrace Lodge is the next one.
Okay, maybe I've switched the order. We'll do the Terrace Lodge one, I apologize. Terrace Lodge redevelopment revised development agreement.
Be it resolved that the report titled Terrace Lodge redevelopment revised development agreement dated February 1, 2022, received from the General Manager of Engineering, Planning and Enterprise be received and filed for information, and that the warden and chief administrative officer be directed and authorized to sign the Ministry of Long-Term Care Revised Development Agreement.
Okay, thank you. Someone to move and someone to second, Counselor Menel, seconded by Counselor Purcell, and I'll turn this over to you, Brian.
Thank you, Madam Warden, through you to Council. In March of 2021, the Ministry of Long-Term Care advised staff that its previously fully executed development agreement needed to be amended in order to bring it in compliance with their modernized capital funding policy, the new cost eligibility guide, and to align with the provincial transfer payment agreement requirements. As noted in the staff report, with it comes some additional minor funding, which is good news. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call the vote.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Menel.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Madam Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Okay, the next item is Bank Street, south of Catfish Creek, re addition to Elgin County Highway System.
Be it resolved, sorry, be it resolved that the within report to council dated January 29, 2022, and entitled Bank Street, south of Catfish Creek, re addition to Elgin County Highway System be received and filed, and that council consider enactment of a bylaw re-adding Bank Street between the South Bank of Catfish Creek and Collin Street in the community of Port Bruce and the township of Malahide to the highway system for the Corporation of the County of Elgin.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second, Counselor Menel, and seconded by Counselor Jones, and I'll turn this over to Steve. Good morning, Steve.
Good morning. Thank you, and through you to council, this is a matter of, I'm going to call it substantive housekeeping. The report deals with the fallout of bylaw enacted at the last council meeting, reversing the prior bylaw by which Elgin assumed jurisdiction highways in Port Bruce in connection with the Imperial Road Bridge reconstruction, and in particular as required for installation use of the temporary bridge and prompted by a Malahide reply to the circulation of the prior bylaw investigation regarding ownership and jurisdiction over the strength Bank Street, south of Catfish Creek. The lapse was revisited, was a terrible map.
Good luck. Problem.
Statutory ownership of highway, virtue of a order and council that was not understood against or accounted for in the parcel register. So reinstate the circumstances of jurisdiction and ownership that existed as of the bridge act by law, simply re-adding the relevant stretch of Bank Street to the Elgin Highway System, and by virtue of the Municipal Act, the effect will be to return jurisdictional control and responsibility statutory ownership to Elgin County. Happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you, Steve. We had a hard time hearing you. I'm not sure if all the counselors understood everything, but go ahead, Counselor Menel.
I'll fill in the blanks.
Okay.
I'll fill in the blanks for Steve. This was an oversight that actually should have been always with the county property, and when they were dealing with the temporary bridge, it became evident that this should really go back to the county as it was basically from the province when we got it in, what[1690.84] is it, 1990 or something like that, President Brian? So I support Steve's position.
Okay, Counselor Purcell?
Yes, I think Steve borrowed Sally's laptop, so. For the rest of this meeting, he may have to turn off his video because that seems to work for her. And what he has to say is always important to us, but I understand what's going on now too. Thank you for that.
Are there any other questions, concerns, or you just want more information? I don't see any hands up, so we'll call the vote.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next item up is the Thames Valley District School Board trustee distribution for 2022 to 2026.
It resolved that the County of Elgin support the designation of Middlesex County by board resolution as a low-population municipality, and that the County of Elgin support the following Thames Valley District School Board trustee distribution for the 2022 to 2026 term: two trustees representing Middlesex County, two trustees representing Oxford County, two trustees representing Elgin County, six trustees representing the City of London, one indigenous trustee appointed per Ontario Regulation 46297; that the warden of the County of Elgin send advocacy letters to ensure equitable representation that balances the rural interests within the geography of Thames Valley District School Board to the Minister of Education, the Honorable Stephen Leachey, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, the Honorable Stephen Clark, and Elgin Middlesex London MPP Jeff Urick, and that the same letter be sent to Thames Valley District School Board trustee chair and the Director of Education, requesting that a copy of this motion and letter be considered as correspondence at the next board meeting, Board of Trustees meeting, prior to the board's decision with respect to the composition of the 2022 to 2026 Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Jones and Counselor Martin. And Carolyn, I'll turn this over to you.
Since it's an election year, the Thames Valley District School Board can make changes to the composition of their Board of Trustees. According to their calculations, Middlesex County does not meet the requirements for two trustees. In the past, Middlesex County has been officially designated as a low-population municipality, allowing them two representatives on the board. The trustee distribution has historically consisted of two trustees elected in each Middlesex, Elgin, and Oxford, for a total of six rural trustees and six trustees elected in the City of London. Without this designation, Middlesex County would be allowed only one trustee on the board. This change would result in five rural representatives and seven urban representatives on the board. Designating Middlesex County as a low-population municipality will ensure that rural communities continue to have equitable representation on the Thames Valley District School. So the board is required to make this designation by March 31st this year. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Carolyn. Counselor Jones?
Not so much of a question, but a concern that this is the third time that I've sat here and had to deal with this and why it isn't. Well, I don't understand why we have to keep pushing this. I mean, I think by now it should be just is what it is to make things equitable, but so concerning.
Counselor Martin?
Yes, it does concern me greatly too. The City of London is growing and their population is growing, and then they're using this as an excuse each time. But to make the board equitable, it has to have equal representation from rural and urban. And if not, then we need to be looking at possibly Oxford, Elgin, and Middlesex being a separate board from the City of London, which we had talked about at one time even making Elgin a separate board, but I'd be happy even if the three rural counties worked together, and I know that would be heavily supported among the three rural representatives who have been sitting on this Rural Education Task Force.
Are there any other comments?
Just a quick comment, if I may. Madam Warden, through you to council, I'd just like to commend Carolyn Cron for coordinating this advocacy work and for drafting the template report for use by all of our local municipal partners. Well done.
Are there any further comments? Call the vote then, please.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair? Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Warden French?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next item is transfer payment agreement for the municipal modernization program.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Be it resolved that the warden and chief administrative officer be authorized and directed to enter into the transfer payment agreement to receive $125,674 from the municipal modernization program, and that bylaw 22-10 to authorize the warden and chief administrative officer to execute the transfer payment agreement on behalf of Elgin County be enacted. So the report is fairly self-explanatory, though does note that we applied for funding to support the human capital management modernization project as previously supported by council, so these funds will be used to offset the county's contribution. So very exciting news.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Deputy Marks and Counselor Ketchba? And you have anything further to add? Okay, are there any questions or comments?
Good.
Seeing none?
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next item is COVID-19 Emergency Team Planning, January update resolution?
Be it resolved that the report titled COVID-19 Emergency Team Planning, January Update dated February 2nd, 2022, from the chief administrative officer be received and filed.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Martin, Counselor Mennel, and do you have any further comments for this report?
The report is self-explanatory. You've been receiving these monthly, but I would be pleased to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions for the CAO? Go ahead, Counselor Martin.
No questions, just thank you very much. We appreciate the update, and I know there's a fair amount of work to doing it every time, but we do appreciate it.
Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll have the vote, please.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next item is council correspondence. Items for consideration, there are none. Items for information, the consent agenda resolution?
It resolved that correspondence items number one through six be received and filed.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Jones, seconded by Counselor Jagair. And do you want to speak to any of this, Julie? Are there questions or comments? Go ahead.
I would just make a comment that the Community Schools Alliance report is an excellent one and really provides with some excellent information. I very much have appreciated working with Marcus Ryan on the Rural Initiatives Committee for the Rural Education, not initiatives, Rural Education Task Force. And certainly the presentations, et cetera, he makes, and his knowledge has been excellent. And so I very much appreciate this presentation by Mr. Ray Craft and Mr. Ryan.
Are there any other comments about the correspondence, the consent agenda? Seeing none? Call the vote?
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Other business? Are there any statements or inquiries by members? Counselor Mennel, go ahead.
Just a question to staff, and this came back at our last budget meeting, and Duncan was questioning the Finance Department about the share of taxes worth of the county versus the locals, and you indicated that the county had a larger share. And I looked back on ours, and ours is 46 for the township and 43 for the county. And I just assumed that was the case across the county. Is that not the case?
No.
Oh, so every municipality is different? Did not know that.
I mean, it's not a widespread, but I mean, I've watched it over the years, just in increments, go over the.
Explanation, how was that adjustment? Why is one different than the other?
I guess from what I understand is the amount of ratepayers you have in your community versus how much you're spending on your services, for the most part, lower-density municipalities with the same services can get more expensive than ones with higher density. I guess that's the simplest answer to the question, that's what it was explained to me.
Well, in that case, you should be getting more than, we've got 10,000, you've got five or six.
Yeah, we're less.
Should you not be getting more at your local level than us?
Not using formulation that you just mentioned.
Well, you get about a million dollars more in transfer payments.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, we do well on transfer. But I could probably go through here and get you the actual numbers where the pie chart that we sent to our residents breaks out what goes to the county and what we keep locally out of the general tax base that's paid by our residents.
Okay, no, I just was curious.
Through you, Madam Warden. This is perhaps a good opportunity to provide some education through council to the public as well. So Catherine is taking the lead on working on some communications with interested local municipal partners, and at our last CAO's meeting, it seemed as though there was broad interest across the county to work on some joint communication materials. So we will provide specific details by municipality back to council and through you, hope to communicate that to the community as well. So you can anticipate that in the next couple of meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any further statements? Go ahead, Counselor McPhail.
On the line of communication, maybe it's just myself that haven't been getting the council highlights, county council highlights that are distributed out to, used to be distributed out to, in our council agenda, to the members of my council, and my clerk says they haven't been receiving them.
We'll check our list and make sure.
I find it quite useful because it's kind of a check and balance when certainly doing a reporting to council, my local council, to the activities of what's going on at county council. It kind of speeds up the process and the fact that here's what we've been talking about, and this is what we've been doing about it. Have you got any specific questions on any of those issues? So I just kind of missed them by them not being in our agendas.
Three, Warden French, any other municipalities missing those highlights?
Yeah, we haven't been received.
I don't think we've been.
We haven't been very saving.
I don't believe we have either.
We'll double-check our process because that's certainly who we tailor the messaging for, is our local municipal partners as well. They're very well-received by members of the public through our website and social media distribution there, so thanks for bringing that forward.
Further statements or inquiries?
Just to brief comment, Julie, when you're investigating, you will probably find that those are sent to the mayor or the CAO, and unless you include them in correspondence on your agenda, they don't automatically show up for all the council members, so that's the easiest way to handle that. I'm not getting them personally either.
Okay, further statements or inquiries? Okay. Notice of motion? Matters of urgency? And we'll move to closed-meeting items. The resolution, please.
It resolved that we do now proceed into closed-meeting session in accordance with the Municipal Act to discuss the following matters under Municipal Act, Section 239.2, in-camera item number one, which is land acquisition update, in-camera item number two is telecommunications, and in-camera item number three is an organizational review.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Ketchba and Counselor Jones?
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Warden French?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Would anyone like to take a break now?
Yep.
Okay, we'll take about a 10-minute break then. I'd like to welcome everyone back. A motion to rise and report, there was resolution, please.
It resolved that we do now rise and report.
Okay, someone to move and second. Counselor Ketchba and Counselor Mennel, and we'll have the vote.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Okay, the next item is in-camera item number one.
It resolved that staff proceed is directed.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Deputy Warden Marks and Counselor Jones.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next item is in-camera item number two.
It resolved that staff proceed is directed.
Someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Martin and Counselor Ketchba, vote please.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next item is in-camera item number three.
It resolved that staff proceed is directed.
Someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Mennel and Counselor Jones, and the vote, please.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Motion to adopt recommendations from the community of the whole?
It resolved that we do now adopt recommendations of the community of the whole.
Someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Ketchba and Counselor Mennel, we'll have the vote, please.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Considerations of bylaws, bylaw number 22-09.
Be it a first, second, and third read of bylaw 22-09, being a bylaw to establish remuneration rates for employees covered by the job evaluation scale.
Someone to second. Deputy Warden Marks, and seconded by Counselor Jones, and the vote, please.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.